Anything else, it's just a one-time payment and you have the agreement before you in the packet for discussion. And I would at this time defer to Attorney Krzyszczewski if he has additional information.
No sir, I think you were very precise. We did ask for safeguards from the village's standpoint, respect the lien waivers, the work being done properly. We want to party to the action, we just want to make sure that all the developers, contractors, subs, vendors were paid full. The lien person that individual or the contractor company for the service was rendered on behalf of both themselves and the village of Moni.
That's the formal motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Under discussion, I just want to mention that the total amount is half of that. In other words, the developers, the companies involved paid half of the amount, we paid the other half. The total was $100,008 or something like that.
Refresh my memory, did we have any kind of agreement, verbal or otherwise, with this Taco Bell, KFC Taco Bell, prior to this that we were going to reimburse them?
There was, initially when the project started, my answer would be no to that.
Okay.
It's during the project when they had already purchased the property, had started on a site plan, and it was at the development of that site plan that their first problem came into being, and that was ingress egress to Morning Manhattan Road. From there, it snowballed into an effect that in order to get full access, instead of a right-in, right-out, to get a full ingress egress access, they had to, as part of that project, rework some of the Morning Manhattan Road for drainage issues, which was what was done in front of the Burger King facility. And so these, what we're dealing with here are some additional expenses that weren't figured at the onset. After that, there was an indication, would the village be willing to help? And my indication was that I'm sure that the village will look at that and be willing to consider that, but never was there a, because we had no money, no monetary value at that point, an onset that, you know, we're promising to pay anything.
And so some of this, the water, the drainage issues and stuff, it's actually done, was done in front of the Burger King rather than...
That is correct. That was a requirement of Will County. And if you, Will County basically said, if you don't do the improvement there, you don't get the ingress egress to your property. If you don't have the ingress egress, the project is dead. Additionally, if you recall, this did come before the village board on at least two separate occasions, when they had to revise their site plan. They had put their site plan in and paid their... Under ordinance, it is a mandate to have a fence, but the type of fence is, you know, not stated, or it doesn't have to be a white vinyl fence. And additionally, that would bring it in line with some existing fences that are there being white vinyl in type and keep it as an upscale project.
Roll call please.
Ransor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Stachin?
Yes.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Under item F2 is a redevelopment agreement for JTR Heating. If you recall, I did put these redevelopment, the development and redevelopment agreement out in an inter-office memorandum. I don't have the date right off the top of my head, but it was not part of the board packet. It is now included in the board packet. It was merely informational for the trustees. But this redevelopment agreement with JTR Heating comes, is with regards to the property located on the southwest corner of Court Street and Route 50, commonly referred to as the old Cockle Building. JTR Heating is looking to move into that building, upgrade it first, move into the building, bring it up to code. We have, as a municipality, have done an inspection on that building some time ago and provided a two-page inspection report of the deficiencies. And subsequently, Mr. Rup has purchased that, wishes to move his business here. And this is a two-pronged approach, if you will, because it is a redevelopment agreement. And that is, number one, is I'll just highlight the points, calls for, first of all, that building lies within a TIF district, TIF number four, and the redevelopment of that building calls for a $30,000 payout reimbursement. They have to make the payments first, a $30,000 reimbursement in year one for TIF-eligible expenses, and then in year four, a $20,000 reimbursement for TIF-eligible expenses. And that's all of the TIF incentive that there is. And as you move on, the one thing that JTR did not do is they were running their business as a service organization, and therefore, the taxable amounts on the equipment, when they purchased the equipment, they would pay the tax. And therefore, they wouldn't charge tax upon the resale of that equipment. And as an incentive to have sales tax brought into the community, there was a 1% sales tax rebate for a period of 10 years, and that amount that you see in this agreement was based upon projections provided to us by JTR. And the bottom line is, if they don't bring in that amount of sales tax, then they don't get the reimbursement of that 1%. And the village would realize a 1% sales tax increase that we would have not realized before at all. So it was a two-pronged approach in order to make this redevelopment agreement functional. And again, at this point, I would defer to Attorney Krzyszczewski for any additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Again, Mr. Wallace hit all the highlights of the redevelopment agreement. There's enough protection, I believe, from the village's standpoint, environmentally, construction-wise, lien waivers, again, the same verbiage as we put in the previous redevelopment agreements. And also, there is no bonds being issued. So basically, like Mr. Wallace indicated, if John performs will get reimbursed. If he does not perform, there is no reimbursement from the sales tax standpoint. Also, one discussion was a long time ago, I believe, his costs are over $400,000 to $500,000. So 152, I mean, potential reimbursement is pretty reasonable. There's other municipalities that offer more than this, but this was negotiated. As Mr. Wallace indicated, it's up to the board approval. Again, there's no obligation to the village other than paying the 30, and the 20 is set forth for the mortgage that we already have. He has to make the proper improvements, and also, more importantly, provide TIF-eligible expenses. And just by the land acquisition itself, we have an idea what he paid for, it's TIF-eligible. So he's got some work to do, and then the improvement for the site.
That's the formal motion. So, second. Roll call.
Pat?
Yes.
Stachin?
Yep.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Cransor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next on my report is request for approval to go out the bid for the police department repairs. I apologize for not having any more detailed type of information. However, all I was able to plot you at the time were the prints at the time. And what we have done there is, as you well know, we have been going through some troubles at the police department. And really, this is the proposed amount, the scaled-back proposal that would replace the roof, take care of the proper drainage off of that roof, and take care of the shingled roof, and any gutters and bounce spots that need to be replaced to get the water away from the building, which caused the problem to begin with. I'm happy to answer any questions at this point.
Let's put that in the formal motion, and we can get the discussion if needed. Second. Discussion. Roll call please.
Stachin?
Yes.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cransor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And the last item that I would like to report on, it doesn't appear on my report. There is no action required. It's mainly informational purposes. But the municipality's been working with the residents and the homeowners association of Derby Meadows to bring the board up to speed. You may or may not be aware that upon failure of the developer to complete that development, the attorney was able to call a letter of credit, and I believe back in May of 2010, was successful in receiving a letter of credit in an amount of $80,708.37, of which, out of that amount, bills to engineers and attorneys and bank fees and so forth were invoices totaling $2,744.90 were spent. That leaves an amount of $77,963.47 to go toward the completion of Derby Meadows subdivision. If you have the infrastructure of the Derby Meadows subdivision, if you've had the opportunity to drive down there, you will know that it desperately needs that. I was able to meet, we were invited, myself and the mayor were invited to the Derby Meadows Homeowners Association. I initially had approached them with the possibility of getting this cleaned up, because we carry this balance forward each year, and we can't spend it on anything else, and we shouldn't. It was intended for that. Long and the short of it is, engineering reports, quotes have been requested on behalf of Derby Meadows, a private organization, not on behalf of the village of Moni. And those quotes are in and are being turned over to Derby Meadows with a engineering recommendation for approval. And if Derby Meadows signs the contract, that should be brought up to speed, to code, prior to the end of the construction season this year. And those people, to say the least, were very excited about that. So what will be before the board on the next agenda will be a request to spend an amount not to exceed the $77,963.47 to pay for the bills that Derby Meadows has incurred for the infrastructure improvements. Therefore, it completes our requirements of executing that letter of credit. And at this point, I'd like to break and refer to the attorney to see if I skipped anything. Does that...
You've got better memory than I do.
I have...
Don't scare us, though. No, don't scare us. This is one of the banks that had some issues. They're no longer with us. We were able to secure the letter of credit. The Derby Meadows individuals years ago had asked for help over there. So we did line item this money, and so if they're in contract to get those repairs done, we can feel comfortable in leasing those homes. We were fortunate to get that letter of credit, so hopefully that will offset some of their costs. And their costs at that time were pretty substantial, but we're gonna be doing good for them.
In closing, I would just like to also inform the board that there has been an indication that if the, if Derby Meadows brings the infrastructure up to standards, if the village would consider in taking over that infrastructure. So just informing the board of that. There's been no formal request. That request would come before this board in writing. And we would have an engineer's review to indicate that all infrastructure is up to standards. But for now, all this is informational, and that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to the mayor's agenda. I have nothing at this time. Engineer's report.
At this point, I really don't, I don't have too much to report at this time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you. We have one item for the board's review and consideration. There's an ordinance before the board for the review, approving a variance request committed by Mr. and Mrs. Vaughn for the property at 25737 Iris. Both Mr. and Mrs. Vaughn are present tonight. They appeared at the zoning board meeting, which took place last board meeting. The zoning board meeting recommended approval of the variance request. They would like to install a fence on their site pursuant to the village code. They did properly notify all the landowners and neighbors, and there are no objections to the request. So it's up for the board for the review and consideration.
Ordinance number please. entertain that motion. Roll call please.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cransor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Stachin?
Yes. Motion carries. Counsel?
Attorney, I have, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. Brings us to the committee reports with finance trustee Stockton. I have one action tonight, sir. At the last board meeting, we had requested to have on the agenda pertaining to update our ordinances since we will start carrying video gaming machines in the village. At that time, one of the other trustees had requested a list of what other communities charge at the last finance committee meeting that was brought up under discussion, that was given out to all the trustees that were here. And we had discussed upon a, to set the price at $200 for annual license fee per machine. And as of right now, when everything is up and running, there'd be 15 machines, five machines in each establishment. There was one question brought up for the use of this money. One of the trustees had brought up to use it for local groups in, within the village, whether cow scouts, whatever, use to help bring money back into the village. I have a question for our village attorney. Can that money be used for that, or since it's a licensing fee, like our other licensing fee, just ask about corporate?
Most of times, in the past, it goes into the corporate account. The board can designate a project for that money. You know, earmark that money towards certain projects. If you want to earmark it towards Court Street or improve certain playgrounds, that's one thing. When it comes to charitable donations, that might be a little different story. But most times, it goes into corporate. You can earmark it for a special project, but it's for corporate special purposes. And I just finished another one. Similar to this, we talked to the gaming board about the licensing fees. We get licensed, we can impose a reasonable fee, and then we use it for down-party purchases.
Okay. Ordinance number please.
No, I have your question and the draw-up of the ordinance.
Oh, the draw-up, the ordinance is correct.
So it's time to make a motion that we update our ordinances pertaining to our licensing fees for the $200 fee, which is from year to year, January to December, and that to be drawn up and presented to the board at the next village board meeting. That's the formal motion.
I'll second that. Roll call please.
Gray?
I'm sorry. Discussion?
One thing I do want to clarify is, from what I understand, I believe in the discussions we had before, that the fee for that was actually being paid by the provider of the machines, not the local establishment. Is there a way that we can draft into the, if, sorry, chairman of finance, can we draft into the ordinance that stipulates the fee is to be, the licensing fee is not to be placed on the local establishment, but the provider of the order? If we do that, that's...
That's the vendor's paid-out fees.
Right. I just want to make sure that you put on the local establishment as part of that.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
No.
Gray?
No.
No.
Cransor?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Stachin?
Yes.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, sir.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to place of trustee Horn.
Yes, I do have one item that was carried over from the last meeting. We did hold a police committee meeting last week. We need information about the request for two Ford Expedition four-wheel-drive vehicles, and we got our information. And so I'd like to move that we purchase these two police vehicles. The cost each is $27,135. The total order cost is $54,270. These are for 2012 Ford Expeditions, four-by-four. And as the chief had indicated to our meeting, he said that there are many occasions when we do need four-wheel-drive vehicles getting back into different remote areas and so forth, also with heavy snows and after storms and so forth. And this also is part of our regular vehicle rotation. So I'd like to move that we purchase these two vehicles.
Trustee Horn, can I recommend one thing also?
Sure.
We also have to pay for the license title, all those, I think the chief has a number. You might want to put not to exceed on that, rather than cutting a check just for those two vehicles.
That would be fine.
You have to add that to the purchase cost. Chief, do you have those numbers coming in, sir?
Generally, they charge about $140 for transfer fees, and it's by the title, and I don't know how accurate the licenses is, but it's probably, if we included $600 for both vehicles, that should cover it.
So if we did $55,500, that should cover it, right?
No, no, no.
Okay.
After exceed $55,500. That's the formal motion.
Yes.
I'll second it. Roll call. I'm sorry. Absolutely. It's a good point to bring forward.
Yeah, can I do that?
Yes.
There's, this is not all being paid by the, of our general fund. This is, $38,000 of this is being paid by the vehicle fund contributions obtained from tickets processed through the Will County Court. So there's a big chunk of that is being paid for from tickets.
Roll call please.
Horn?
Yes.
Cransor? Yes. Pat?
Yes.
Stachin?
Yes.
Barkmore?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries. Anything else, sir?
That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Brings us to public health with trustee Gray.
Just a reminder that this weekend, we do have Halloween happenings here on the pavilion from 6 until 9 p.m. And the Halloween happenings will include a haunted hayride, a pumpkin contest, which will be, pumpkins will be provided by the village. You need to bring your own decorations, which will be judged, and a costume contest, which will be judged per age groups. And the Halloween trick-or-treat hours on Wednesday the 31st are from 3 to 7. Hopefully, everybody will make it out. I know the weather at this point is not cooperating, but we should have a good turnout. It is a good time. We will have a DJ also Saturday night, so we will have a lot of fun, so please make it out if everybody can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brings us trustee Barkmore, public property. Nothing this time, sir. Thank you, sir. Lord Richard, trustee Pat.
I think everyone can see that, as I say, they're cutting up our new roads. There were various problems there, which the village has been very deeply involved with it, making sure everything is done properly. I commend Mr. Wallace and the mayor making all their trips up there. I'm not going to go into detail of all the different things, but the village is on top of it. It's definitely not going to be like that bridge we have over I-57. End of report.
Thank you, sir. Order of trustee Cransor.
I just have two informational items. The first one is the leak to the water tower on Chestnut has been properly repaired, and it is up and working. And we were able to do all of that, if I'm not correct, Mr. Wallace called in-house from our public works.
I'm going to say majority, with the exception of the actual welding that took place.
Correct. So I'm glad to announce that that is finally fixed. The last thing I would like to state is, just for our residents to be aware, we are going to continue hydrant flushing as long as weather permits. If it's too cold and by flushing, the water will come out and freeze instantly, of course, we're not going to do it. But as long as we're having weather like this, Tuesday through Thursday, the partner of public works will continue throughout the entire year flushing hydrants. And that should help improve our water system. So that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Given its development, I have nothing at this time. Any unfinished business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just in review of the past couple meetings, I know I've asked for a vote to be taken. I don't believe it needs to be, excuse me, I don't believe it needs to be an ordinance or a resolution. I just really want to establish the board's consensus, one way or the other, on making the trustee packets available to the public in their entirety, with the exception of those items that are stipulated as executive session type initiatives.
Is that a formal motion?
Sure. Yes.
entertain that motion. I'll second that.
Just under discussion, asking our attorney, is that the only things we have to keep from that is what's going to go into the executive session? I just want to be sure what we post is a legal thing to post.
What you can do, sir, you can make the packet available for the individual, I'm sorry, for the general public, with the exception of like items for personal negotiations or collective bargaining or threatened litigation. The, it's just a packet available for review. You can put bills and claims, you could put redevelopment agreements or drafts of potential ordinances, not potential, drafts of ordinances. But when it comes to issues that go into executive session, no, they should not be part of the packet.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Currently, we do have a packet available for people to come in and see ahead of our meetings, correct?
Yes.
It's in the office. They can come in and see it currently. So that, we've been doing that. So the difference in this would be, that's what I want to clarify.
That it would be available online, along with the agendas and things that are posted online. So when it...
Oh, so you're not asking for more packets to be printed?
No, not at all.
You're just asking, okay, because that's what I mean, we need to clarify, because that's, I didn't know anything about online. That's where I was confused.
We currently are doing a decent job of posting the agendas and some things like that online. I'm merely asking that the draft copy or whatever else, even mark, draft, any word, proposal, watermark, we have the ability to do that with our technology we have here of having that available so that the general public can have access to that. Whether the village hall is open or not, they would have access to that. And I just think it's just good business. I know a few years back in Washington, they had talked about, I forget the exact terminology they used, they referred to it as a sunshine policy of some sort, where they didn't want to, it failed in Washington. Doesn't mean we shouldn't try to implement it here, where they make any, any legislation available online for a period of five days or something of that sort. I'm just asking that whenever the packet's ready, we have 40 hours, you know, whenever the packet's ready, that it be posted online along with everything else so that people have the opportunity to read through it.
And how, like, I know our papers say draft.
They're just saying that when you read the documents, you have the ability, just like it's already being done in where it says draft on there, you can do that as a watermark. I guess it'd be a correction analogy and so on.
Anyone else?
I just have a real quick question. So just again, as trustee Cransor, because we've always, you've asked us a few times what you have about packets being for the public. So you're not asking for actual paper packets. Now you're asking to put it online.
Right. If there's much more to this one, so I can maybe put it...
Like you asked, and everything is available if they come to the village hall and ask to see it. But you're now asking this for it to be online, correct?
Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Stachin?
No, I'll just...
Are we done? Everybody done? Roll call.
Cranzler?
No.
Hatt?
Yes.
Stockton?
Present.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
No.
Horn?
Yes.
Three-three? Three-two? Well, so there'd be...
Yeah.
Yes. The mayor, oh. Doesn't the president count for the favor as if when you abstain?
When you abstain.
Okay.
Present means, if when you abstain, it goes to the majority. That means whether present, so that's three-two.
Motion carries, sir. Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
I do have one thing, and I'm not sure if you want me to address this right now or perhaps after, you know, open to the public. I just have a comment regarding something that was written in the paper, and I just would like to clarify it. So I'm just trying to find out when the appropriate time would be.
I would probably prefer you wait till come in the public.
That's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Let's go on to open to the public. I'm sorry, new business. Okay, now we're going to open the public. Now that you've got items, go to podium, you name your address, keep your comments in three minutes.
Hello, everyone. May I introduce myself, Mike Margrath, I'm the president of WPAL. My address is three-six-two Charles Lane Braywood, six-oh-four-oh-eight. A lot of developments recently with WPAL, which I'm sure some of you are aware of. And, I mean, that have nothing to do with anything I've addressed previously, but that some of you may be unaware of, and certainly a lot of people out in the public may not be aware of, and it's important that they know. In the last month and a half or two months, WPAL has vastly expanded our coverage. And we've done that because ever since the station was founded in roughly nineteen eighty-seven, we were only able to bring our content to people who were cable subscribers, which was Continental Cablevision and, you know, later on became Comcast. We've been on Comcast Channel Four for many, many years. But we have received calls from people who are just on rabbit ears or on, you know, one of the satellite systems saying, how can we get the village board meetings? How can we get our coverage? And they couldn't, because the only way we went out was on Channel Four. We now have on our website, if you can go to wpaltv.com, it'll take you to our page that has a schedule of everything that is going out on Channel Four. But that's, it's a page that's hosted through Facebook. And if you click down from the on the air tab to our timeline tab, go over to that page, and we have now dozens of videos posted, the last several village board meetings of each of the villages, township meetings when we have them, and as well as a lot of the other content that's provided to us, things like the Illinois channel, Will County board meetings, Will County, some of the committee meetings. Wherever either we have the content, we upload it, or if we find that there's other people have already uploaded it and it's available online, we post links to it. So now anybody in the village will, essentially anybody who has internet access, which is something like ninety percent of the public, can now watch all of our meetings and not just wait for the schedule like you have to do on Channel Four, but on demand. So if there's somebody who's working and they happen to be a night owl and want to watch it at two in the morning, they can do that, they can pause it, they can back up and catch the content. So this is essentially revolutionary for us and it's great for the public. So that's one thing we wanted to let you guys know and to let the public know. Now another thing is, of course, two weeks ago at the meeting, one of our former volunteers, Mr. Reyes, came up and he expressed some concerns about the way we were getting the meetings on the air. That is, it's comparable to what's been going on with Beecher for, well, since we've been caring for Beecher. We don't have any volunteers over there. So there, they have a, one of the village officials records their meetings and then they put it on DVD, it used to be on videotape, now it's on DVD. And he lives in Peatown and it's convenient for him. So he actually brings the DVD over to the station and we get it on the air. We used to have volunteers that would do that, going back all the way with the videotapes and then later on with DVDs. But technology marches on in the same way that we can do a lot of things online now that we couldn't before. It's no longer necessary for somebody, because we don't have anybody who's a volunteer in Moni that lives in Peatown, it's convenient. Anybody, you know, have to drive down there, go to the station and take care of it and then come back. So rather than having somebody spending, you know, fifteen miles of gas money and a half an hour of their time, everything's being recorded digitally now onto a chip. And so we have a village official, one of our trustees, thank you, Mr. Farquhar, who has set up a server for us. He is, he's technologically advanced. He knows how to do a lot of things online. So he set up a server for us so that our volunteers can upload it. If they shoot a meeting, they can upload it to that server. Then we can download it remotely and make sure everything gets on the air without people having to drive. It's not a foolproof system. In the same way that the, that the system before, having somebody drive there wasn't foolproof. There were times that a volunteer would have a tape or a DVD and they couldn't get it there because of a job or another conflict. We've had issues where the technology, where the upload froze halfway through and so on. But we're working through those things. Mr. Reyes had shot a couple meetings and to be honest, I've worked with him enough times to know that he is not very computer-friendly. And trying to walk him through the process of uploading it could have taken me hours. But on the other hand, he lives about a block from Mr. Farquhar, so I said, look, can you just get it to bring it over by Jay or let Jay get it from you? Because that makes things a lot easier. He, you know, he can do it. He took that. He understood that to mean that only Jay could do this and that everything had to go through Jay. And so he felt that that was an undue, and well, as he put it, he thought it was an ethical problem. Actually, Mr. Farquhar gets no benefit from doing this. He gets, he puts in extra time, he's put in extra, and it serves the people. But there is no way that he can control it or edit it or anything like that, so. I just wanted you to know that that was the, you have an understanding of what was going on last week. Mr. Reyes didn't have a full understanding of how it was being done.
I'm going to ask you just one question.
Sure.
You probably weren't, you watched it.
Pardon? Oh, if I watch, yeah, I watch just that segment, I don't watch full meetings, I've got too many.
Well, maybe this one, because I do believe Mr. Reyes was in a run in the camera at the last meeting when he called one of our trustees an idiot. You should be ashamed of it, that you have him now with that, because honestly, that's unfair. These people up here, all of these people up here, and some of them may not have heard it, but a lot of people have heard it, putting a lot of time to try to do the right thing. And I just want you to know that, because I know we've had prior discussions.
Well, just to, to make sure that you understand too. Mr. Reyes had talked to me about what he saw as an ethical problem, and I had tried explaining it to him many times. And I let him know that there isn't an ethical impropriety here. And I'm sorry that we could agree to disagree. Now at that point, if he had a problem, in my opinion, he should have talked it over with the trustee Farquhar and trustee Horn, because trustee Horn has his son doing it, he's uploading some of these as well. And that, he didn't get satisfaction there, he should have spoken to Mr. Wallace yourself. Instead, he came up and made these accusations in public forum, which I think put WPAL in a bad light, especially in front of you guys. So it, Mr. Reyes will no longer be volunteering for the station. As any other member of the public, if he wants to take his camera and shoot something and submit it, any member of the public can do that with their own equipment, but he will no longer be a WPAL volunteer. His wife, Diane Reyes, has come and she's decided to come and do things. But I've reached an understanding with her that when she does a set, he is no longer, you know, she can do it as any member. And by the way, we do need volunteers, so anybody who wants to get involved, we do ask you because Peter Horn is here operating it and he's doing a fantastic job, but he can't make it to committee meetings. So again, we put out the call for volunteers. And if anybody ever has any questions, if you call the station line, it forwards to my cell phone. I'm happy to speak with any, not only village officials, but members of the public, I get calls all the time and try to address, you know, everything that you need. But please check out wpaltv.com, it's a Facebook page. Go to the timeline and you will see just in the last, and there's new things every day.
We got to move this on.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Trustee Cranzler?
At this time, I'm going to hold my comment till after, till the next board meeting. I'd like to speak with the attorney first.
Okay, ma'am. Okay, raise that. Again, motion go into executive session under purchase of property, under section two-C five. And possible personnel, I don't think we have anything to follow up with. Some of this conversation, no, I can't take it out, we got personnel. This is just an information, so actually, if you want to sit around, you're welcome to, but there's no means I think we can. I'm sorry. Yes. Second. So. Roll call.
Hatt?
Yes.
Stockton?
Yep.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler? Yes.
We're coming back. Coming back.
Entertained the motion, come out executive session. So.
Stockton?
Roll call, please.
Stockton?
Yes.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler? Yes. Hatt?
Yes.
Motion carries, I entertain the motion to adjourn. So. Sorry. Roll call, please.
Farquhar?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Cranzler? Yes. Hatt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Stockton?
Yes.